One by one, we're extracting the freedoms from us. And so I think Seminole has been very compliant with the lockdown when it was. It was almost detrimental to my business at the time. I almost lost my business because of it. I've been able to somewhat recover since then. And so I'm just here to ask you all the information, just to make a right decision for our county. Make masks optional, not mandatory. I think it's fair. If businesses don't want to work with you, if you don't want to have a mask, that's fair. It's optional at that point, I think. And yeah, just going forward with all these different things that are going to continue to come up with this pandemic. I think we're looking at a vaccine in the future. Is that going to be mandatory or is it going to be optional? I think as a hurdle, we're going to have to cross when we get there. And so I'm just trying to let my voice be heard in this. I want to do it for my family, I want to do it for my children. I believe in this country, I believe in this county. It's a very good place to live. We have low crime rates and as we continue to put restrictions on people, that makes it more difficult to do our jobs or less jobs. We've seen unemployment go skyrocketed this year, which we're all aware of. And with that goes mental health. I believe it's where people aren't doing okay. Mental healing, we've seen across the nation, suicide rates go up, crime rates go up. I mean, we all know what's happened over the last couple of weeks. And I love this town and I want this town to be safe for my children. I want it to be a future for my children. So this is just me making my voice heard and right here, right now, and standing up to what I believe in, that we need to preserve our liberties, we need to preserve our freedoms. And I just think that's the way we operate the best. We are individual people that can be successful when we come together as a community, which can make things happen. And I'm looking forward to there being a bright future for my children here. And so, yeah, I appreciate the time you have given.
Okay. Martin Lo. I do have some notes here that I made at home Sunday evening. These statistics might be a little outdated, but from what I looked at Sunday evening, Gaines County has a population of 20,901 as of 2018. And as of Sunday evening, it's got 28 total cases. So with my calculations, I put the infection rate at 0.001%. And of course, mortality rate is 0%. So I just want to remind everybody what it is that everybody's afraid of, what we're doing, what the reason is for causing people to almost lose their business, lose their jobs, lose their mental health, not being able to feed their own children. I know Cheryl Ziner had said that during this pandemic, she fed 90-plus kids supper every day that couldn't eat supper anywhere else. And that is a result of a 0.001 infection rate and 0 mortality rate. I know, talking about unemployment, from what I've found online, Gaines County had a record-low 2% unemployment rate at this time last year. To June 2020, it was a record high of 8.7%. And again, all because of this virus with a 0.001 infection rate. I know I've been here before, not with the Commissioners' Court, but I still were being affected by this surge. That was even 2016, 2017, when property tax skyrocketed, skyrocketed. And I didn't see any results then. I'm hoping that you can see more people are worried about this, more people take this seriously, that you will listen to the voices that you hear more than they did years ago. I also just want to say, I find it ironic how we just celebrate our independence, yet every day, more and more restrictions are forced upon us. I was trying to find something to do, I can do without permission or regulation from the government. And not the only one I think of is going to the restroom whenever I want to. And I think that's pretty sad. Yeah, I mean, just what everybody's saying here, I like living here, I like the county, I like everything about it. And I do want to teach you here for my children as well. I have three kids I want to see grow up. I want to be able to see them go to school. I don't think this homeschooling is good for anybody. I don't think it's doing any kids any good. I want them to be able to attend school, not have to do it at home. And of course, I want them to have the freedom and ability to make decisions for themselves, to not be told. I think it's immortalizing that we're being told to wear masks. Is that my time?
That's your time.
Got it. Didn't feel like three minutes, but I got most of the questions.
I feel this very out. I may run out of time, but I appreciate your comments, both. All right. Ryan Richards.
Ryan Richards, Chairman, Gaines County Republican Party. I brought my face covering that's in compliance with the governor's dictatorial order, but as per exemption number 10, I don't have to wear it when I'm publicly speaking. I'm kind of going to go off the cuff here. I didn't get enough time to really put a speech together, but I just came, I just got back from South Florida. And in South Florida, basically from Palm Beach County all the way down, they have county-wide mask orders, basically just like here, just like what the governor just did. And it's terrible. Anywhere you go, you have to wear a stupid mask. To go into the grocery store to feed your face, you have to muzzle yourself. And, you know, technically, it says, you know, it's not even mandating an actual mask, an N95 medical device, which, by the way, even N95s don't block the virus because the virus is like .003 microns, or it's .03 microns. And an N95 mask takes away 95% of a particle 10 times bigger. So this virus goes straight through even an N95 mask. So it doesn't work anyways. This really is a, it's a way to bully the public into taking the vaccine whenever it comes out. Because what they're going to tell us is, if you don't have the vaccine, you have to continue wearing the mask. And they'll give you like an ID card if you get the vaccine. So it's the yellow star. And so we need to head this off at the pass and get rid of this. You know, are we actually going to put up with this crap, especially in Texas? You know, it's, and one of the exemptions in the order is a medical issue. You know, you don't have to do it if there's a medical issue. Well, medical issues include anxiety. So, you know, now that I think about it, I think I have a little bit of anxiety whenever I wear a mask in public where I shouldn't have to. Number one, I can't breathe right. Number two, I have a little bit of anxiety knowing that my freedoms in my beloved country are being taken away, and here, most people are okay with it.
Your time.
Thank you for your time.
Jeremy Baker.
I have just four issues I'd like to look at. First of all, my concerns are real low concerning this virus, considering the death rate is so low. The numbers are increasing, but the death rate isn't something to be scared of. Second, I would like to reference one of our founding fathers. He used to say, "I would prefer dangerous liberty over safe slavery." I mean, we're attacking our individual liberty right now by going in compliance with the governor's order. Third, the 99% survival rate seems to be more about compliance than it does to be safety. Because what we're watching is we're watching liberties being decreased for small businesses, and we're seeing big businesses just making all kinds of money, but the small guy, the little mom and pop store, they're the ones that are being affected. The more and more I study this issue, the more I believe that we're seeing that this came right after a botched impeachment of our president. And it came directly to attack the economy in which he was trying to preserve and save. And we see other states like South Dakota that haven't enforced a lot of these restrictions, and they haven't really had a major increase in death rate whatsoever at all. So it's like the boogeyman. We also see that Tokyo, Japan is one of the most dense areas, most dense populations in the world. And they didn't raise in death rates, and they didn't really put the restrictions in place. So therefore, it seems like the restrictions are very unnecessary. And then what we're seeing is power play by a Democratic Party and showing what their influence is in our government, in our school, and everything that we know of. That's what I'm seeing. But in the aspect of, should we enforce the future restrictions? I believe that our governor is trying, is actually going to be censored by the state county that's close to us right now, based on the fact that he has undermined the will of the Republican Party. I don't think that we need to be seeing stuff like that, but the reality of it is, is if you're going to go in and have these conventions where people go and pay money to have you represent them and their views, and then you undermine their will, you're not representing them, you're representing yourself. I want to thank you for your time, and I'll concede my time. Good luck.
James Dak.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, guys, for, I appreciate that. My voice is simple. I just want to be heard too, that I would like these masks to be optional, not mandatory. I think we're all adults, we can make our own decision for our own health. If I'm concerned about my health, and I think a mask could help me, whatever. If I'm not concerned, if I'm willing to take the risk myself, well, now that's on me. So I think we need to give the power back to the people as individuals. And if they want to wear a mask, that's fine, let them wear a mask. If they don't want to, that's fine too. I don't think we should force that on anybody. So I didn't go into a whole lot of statistics or anything. Some of you guys did appreciate that. So my voice was simple, just make them optional.
You have your time.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Crawford.
Thank you. My concern today is not quite as community-minded as this is for my own business. I often operate far and unprepared weddings, this is a wedding venue. And so, B, I'm basically just looking for reassurance and direction this morning because we don't know exactly where we fall in the governor's orders. If we fall under the pitch pathing or if we fall under a mass gathering. I have weddings postponed every weekend from now until Christmas. We don't have a stated occupancy, but when I go by plane, most of our occupancy, our occupancy fee, as far as we're concerned, is about $400. So if you know, it'd be $200. And basically, all I did on Friday was take phone calls from almost every ride I have on the boat, wanting to know if we are going to reschedule or cancel or cut down the escalator. But nobody wants to walk on the road on a Wednesday and cut us down for breaking government rules. So depending on what side you're taking, some of them are more for our county. B is just looking for some reassurance on how to operate our business going forward and make sure that there's compliance, so we don't have to worry about getting cut down in such a manner of that.
Ms. Crawford, we're going to speak to your issue in more detail when we get to the agenda item on COVID. But I looked, because of your call, I looked at the Department of State Health Services webpage, and there is a checklist for wedding venues. It's a three-pager. I've got a copy of it if you want to swing by the office, but we'll talk about this more. And I'm going to ask you to, if you can, stay on the line, and I'm going to ask you to talk more about your business when we get to that particular agenda item. Can you do that?
Yes, sir, yes, thank you.
Okay. And at this time, that will close our public comment session and move to the listed number one agenda item, and that's discuss routine administrative items. Any questions, concerns, corrections on payroll, budget amendment, fund transfers, accounts payable, auditors report only, you have the governor's order to require masks in public It goes too far, that it is an infringement on personal liberty. And we've heard from one business owner, Ms. Crawford, who has a wedding venue and is concerned about her business. DSA test, as recently as July 3rd, has updated guidance for long list of different industries like wedding venues, like nail salon, like, you can go down the list, they've been updated. And they were updated on the 3rd, which is the day after GA29 came out. So they should be up to date and satisfactory for the state for people to go ahead and continue their business. In the case of the wedding venue, I don't think the introduction has changed much, but it says all employees and customers must wear a face mask or wear a face covering over the nose map whenever it is not feasible to maintain six feet of social distancing from another individual. So if you're within six feet of someone that you live with, you don't need a mask. It's when you're within six feet of people that you don't live with. That's in the opening introduction. Health protocols for serving attendees strongly encourage the at-risk population, which is those over 65 with chronic lung disease, moderate severe asthma, chronic heart disease, severe obesity, diabetes, chronic kidney disease undergoing dialysis, liver disease, or weakened immune system. Encourage those folks to watch and participate in the service remotely. That's abandoned area inside the venue reserved for the at-risk population. Ensure proper spacing between attendees. For wedding venues that configure seating arrangements, which are not in rows, ensure at least six feet of separation between other groups, no tables of more than 10. For wedding venues that configure seating arrangements in rows, they maintain at least two empty seats or six feet between groups in a row, except as follows. Two or more members of the same household can sit adjacent with two seats empty on either side. Two individuals who are not members of the same household but who attended together can sit adjacent to one another with two seats empty on either side. Alternate rows between patrons as appropriate. Any other method to provide at least six foot of separation between groups of up to 10 individuals who attend the venue together. And then train protocols for employees, contractors, and volunteers. Train all employees, contractors, and volunteers on appropriate cleaning and disinfection, hand hygiene, and respiratory etiquette. Screen employees, contractors, and volunteers before coming into the church, congregation, or place of worship. Send home any employee, contractor, vendor, or volunteer that has any of the following new or worsening symptoms, signs of symptoms of possible COVID-19, and they give the whole list of symptoms. Do not allow employees, contractors, or volunteers with new or worsening signs listed above to return to work until, and it gives a list of things that they must do before they can return to work. Do not allow employee, contractor, or volunteer with non-close contact to a person who has left confirmed to have COVID-19 to return to work until the end of the 14-day self-quarantine period from the last day of exposure, with an exception granted for healthcare workers and critical infrastructure workers. Have employees, contractors, and volunteers wash or sanitize their hands on entry, and have employees, contractors, and volunteers maintain at least six feet of separation from other individuals if such distancing is not feasible. Then other measures, including hand hygiene, cough etiquette, cleanliness, and sanitation should be rigorously practiced. And then for the facility, regularly clean and disinfect any regularly touched surfaces, disinfect seats before and after services, disinfect any item that comes in contact with attendees. Make hand sanitizer, disinfecting wipes, soaking water, or similar disinfection readily available. Consider placing readily visible signage to remind everyone of best practice, hygiene practices. And for wedding venues with more than 10 employees and/or contractors present at one time, consider having an individual wholly or partially dedicated to ensure the health protocols adopted by the venue are being successfully implemented or followed. Ms. Crawford, I had asked you if you could give us some kind of plan. Does that come close to it? Ms. Crawford's still there.
I'm from your story. Your call. Yes, sir. I mean, we, our county, we think it has rather a 50 capacity, but it's below the 50%. We have mine before we did already at our stores. We make hand sanitizer and mask on every table. We don't have tables of more than 10. I mean, we pretty much follow all of the guidelines already.
Okay. Then...
Then I wasn't able to find it after you told me where to look, so I already have it sent it off as well.
So with that in mind, is it the sense of the Commissioners' Court that she can move forward?
Yes.
We're getting a nod. I know you can't see the nods over the phone, but we're getting an unanimous nod, so I'm thinking that you can move forward with your plan.
Thank you, sir. I believe we can.
Okay. So then we'll go ahead and we'll go to DD14. DD, we've been doing this, and some of them we're doing every week, so that's why our number's up higher. DD14 is designed to last for a month. We won't revisit it until August 5th, if I remember correctly. DD14 is written in compliance with GA28 and the proclamation that changed the numbers from 100 to 10, and that was on July 2nd. And GA29, which was issued on the 2nd, concerning face coverings. There's some language in GA29 as far as the face coverings are concerned that will make that incredibly difficult for law enforcement to enforce. It is, it basically says, their masks are required as long as you can't social distance. We're also given a opportunity for an exception if the county is under 20 active cases. As of this morning, we are at 20 active cases. We have 36. We had 36 cases. We had a spike Monday evening, and it took the health department all day yesterday to get their numbers straight. And I got official notice that will be going to the media this morning, that we have 36 cases. We had 36. We had 16 recoveries. We currently have 20 active cases. Now, the problem is, the exemption form says, that I had to sign it to send in, and I did, I sent it in Monday morning, because Monday morning, I thought we had 14 cases active. And by Monday evening, I get a call and said, we're not sure whether we have 16 or we have 23. And so that's why we had to wait on numbers yesterday, but I've already sent this in. It says, I hereby attest that Gaines County currently does not have more than 20 active COVID-19 cases. Technically, that's still threatening. But if we take the exemption and get another active case today, then we lose the exemption until we go back under 20, and we stay under 20 for 30 days. I understand that if the county, and I had to sign this, if the county seeks 20 active cases, then the county will be required to comply with all aspects of GA29 after a 30-day waiting period if the county has less than 20 active cases. I am eligible to reapply for exemption. We're on the TDM list as examples. We need to make sure that that line in the sand of 20 means we wouldn't lose our exemption unless we went to 21. But I've heard the comments, and I'm going to add my comment, because I don't necessarily agree with the comments that have been made before. Whether to mask if they're one properly, despite the statement that the N95 won't stop this virus, because it's not fine enough. The real purpose of masks is to keep droplets to be, to instruct you directly in the face. If someone coughs or sneezes in your face, or if you're talking to them at close range and they spray, if they're carrying the virus, a mask protects your face, protects your nose and mouth, which is where normally with droplets... and mouth, which is where normally with droplets, you either get it sprayed in your nose and mouth, maybe in your eyes, or you touch a surface where those droplets are and then you rub your nose. Then you've got it in your nose. That's the way droplets pass. If you get sprayed in the face, this keeps the moisture away until you can take it away to get a freshener. You don't want to let it sit there and dry, no. Because once it gets dry, then it can work its way through the fabric. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. But, you know, I worked in nursing for 35 years. I worked in the operating room. I understand how masks work and why we wear it. And there's a time and purpose, and I guess that maybe my background makes me, I spent 20 years in masks, eight hours a day. It's, it can be bothersome. I read on Facebook, someone was talking about their health condition and they can't wear a mask. And I understand that. They've got lung problems, they've got heart problems. But the reality is, they really shouldn't be out in public because they are at risk. If they're concerned, if they're not concerned about catching it and possibly dying, well, that's their thing. But our job is sometimes protect people from themselves. And I, you know, I won't, one part of my training was be able to run a triage in a mass casualty situation. A triage says that you look at people as they come in and you divide them into three groups. One group is these people need immediate assistance to save their life or limb. Another group is these people need assistance, but they can wait. The third group is these people are gone. They're leaving. We can't save them. We don't have the ability. And you set them aside and you make them come. But I can't, you know, I've heard, I don't know how many times, oh, one death was two deaths. Let's face it, we have people die from flu, we have people die from the common cold, we have people, there's a list of diseases that each year work their way through society and they kill people. And I have a feeling that even with the vaccine, this COVID-19 is going to be here for the rest of our lives. And we're going to have to learn how to deal with it. And we are, we're developing, I mean, they want a vaccine for this coronavirus, but, you know, the common cold is a coronavirus and we can't develop a functional vaccine for the common cold. So I'm not, I don't have a lot of faith in developing a vaccine. But we are developing treatments that are shortening hospital stays. They are taking people that had to be put on a respirator and shortening their treatment time and getting them off respirators and getting them eventually out of the hospital to recover. We are developing treatments for this, but we're not there yet. And right now, face masks seem to be the best, but the requirement from the governor is you only have to wear them if you're within six feet, if you cannot social distance. Now, we've got businesses out in town that have put up signs that say you must wear face masks. That is, they're right. It is their corporate policy, whatever it is. If they want to put a face mask sign up, then we need to honor it. And if they don't want to put a face mask sign up, if they, as one I saw, said, we're not going to require a face mask, then just like the people that don't wear a face mask and decide they don't want to go in this store because they require a face mask, the ones that don't wear a face mask that say, we're not requiring a face mask, I can decide I'm not going there if I think it's unsafe. But the real trick is social distancing and washing. So I'm going to suggest that because we are listed right now as exempt, that we continue to make face masks optional, but I think we should encourage the use in those situations where social distancing is not convenient. We've got some small stores and I think the library, current library in C-Red, they need to be wearing masks. And, you know, if the library in C-R are won't put a mask sign up, then I think that should be, they live and they need to feel safe. But it won't be necessarily a requirement. But if there's a sign that says face mask required and a citizen wants to go in without a face mask and they're asked to leave, if they won't leave, then I think the governor's GA-29 says the trespass laws are not suspended. If you're asked to leave and you don't leave, you're committing trespass. It's a class B misdemeanor. It goes from a $250 fine for no sign, for no mask, to a $2,000 fine or six months in jail. We will either be appropriate with each other, I think, if people say, no, wear a mask, then you have to wear a mask. And we will honor that. But if, and if they say you don't need to wear a mask, you can decide for yourself whether or not you want to do business. You know, and that's, I think, where we need to go. I'm going to ask the mayor if he has a problem with what I've just said. John?
No, this is from the governor's office. This is something that we have to deal with. They send to us. So I think that's why the council, if our business has the right to allow people into their business in whatever state they want them to come into and allow them not to come into their business. I think what you said is good.
I've got, I had four hands shut down my little precinct. And I got one guy that's telling me over, he can't breathe and he lost about 30 pounds. So, and then I've got one guy that had no side effects. It affects everybody differently. But I got one here and I wasn't sure if he was going to pull through. So, and you're talking about, you know, you almost lost your business. I see this as the governor trying to keep your business open. He don't want to shut down businesses, but we have to do something. You know, if your business, if you don't want to wear a mask, don't think of wearing a mask. But from where I'm sitting, I'm thinking he's doing it. He's saying, hey, we may need to do this to not shut down taxes again. This is where I'm going for it. They shut down my little precinct for two weeks and we've never been shut down ever and we have to. I've got room for all my others. I've got immunity for it. I stay six feet apart and if I can't stay six feet apart, I'm going to wear my mask. If you don't want to, you don't want to. But if a store requires you to, if you don't want to, you don't go in that store. It's still your choice, is the way I see it.
We've got, currently, we have five trailers and one dispatch out from the sheriff's office. They're working overtime, barely putting together big enough crews to cover the requirements for stacking from the jail standards commission. Hopefully, one of those will hit the recovery sign by Friday. And then over the next week, we might get those five back and we'll go from 20 down to 15. But, and that's the way this works. But when we go over 20, what the state health authorities are telling us is when you get over 20 active cases, then you've got a higher than likely possibility of being exposed to the virus in the community. And when you're down under 20, I mean, your infection rate is, I don't do math in my head that well, but in simple math, that's about right. It's not, I mean, we've not had any deaths, but we do have people that are at risk. And our job is to provide the tools that can keep people. Mayor Lou?
I've got it.
You can come in and sit in the.
Oh, thank you.
Ma'am?
Can I ask a question? When you say active cases, do you mean that they tested positive or are the people actually sick showing symptoms?
Yes. Well, either they tested positive or they're sick showing symptoms and for whatever reason they've not been tested. But the numbers don't get counted until they're reported to the health department. The health department starts attracting on them. The numbers, if someone gets sick and goes home and self-isolates and doesn't tell anybody, that number is not in the, it's not in the mix. The numbers are the numbers that are coming through the health department. So they're being reported and the, you know, usually the health department, if you've got symptoms, will ask you to get tested. And so if you've got symptoms and you get tested, then you show up as evidence.
I just want to ask that because I've heard that there's a lot of times that people are tested and the test says they're positive, but they never actually get sick. So to me, that means they never had it to begin with.
That's not necessarily true, just as Mr. Ralston said. One of his employees tested positive and showed no symptoms. That's one of the dangerous things about this virus. Young, healthy people can be infected and not show any symptoms and still be contagious, although not as contagious as someone who's running a fever and showing all the other symptoms. But according to the CDC, you can be contagious and not be showing symptoms.
I believe.
I'm sorry. We have to do, we have to deal.
I think they say a lot of things.
Yeah. We have to deal with the information that we're given from CDC, Department of State Health Services, the doctors that are hired to work for the state and federal government. And that's what we have to deal with.
Can I add something? I appreciate y'all coming and speaking because very rarely in council meetings we're here we have anybody show up. But I would encourage you to contact Dustin Burrow of our state legislature representative and the governor's office because we are dealing with what's handed out from the state. If you're beating the ballot, they need to be addressed at that level also. We're already talking about something, sure.
And I, you know, I've seen some folks go, well, this is unconstitutional and that's, I can't get there from here because there's nothing about not wearing a mask that's covered in the constitution. It doesn't abridge your free speech, it doesn't abridge your freedom of religion, it doesn't negate your right to bear arms. You go through the list of rights and the bill of rights and being required to wear a mask does not interfere with any of those rights, which means that doesn't, it's not unconstitutional. It is within the law, Government Code 418, that gives the, that in an emergency, a declared emergency, gives the governor the power to make orders and proclamations and there's a whole list of things. And I'll pull it out and read it to you if you want, but it says, those who come and have the force of law. So when the governor gives us an executive order, then it's the law that we have sworn to obey and uphold. And it was, it is within his power. And I see you guys, I don't know that we need to get there yet. I'm not going to argue this point here, okay? But DD-14 leaves us, I've written it so that we can function with an exemption or without. If there's an exemption, then we'll have to require face masks if you can't social distance, just like the governor requires. I understand that the law enforcement is not going to be walking around with a six-foot measure, make sure that we're six feet apart. Their enforcement concepts are consistent with what I think they should be, that, you know, if you don't, if you go into a place that says no sign, or if you go into a place that says masks are required and you don't have a mask and someone asks you to leave and you won't leave, then, and if the police or the sheriff's office gets called and they have to come and you won't leave still because it's your right to do business without a mask, well, we're going to enforce that business's right to require masks. And you will be asked to leave by the police officer, and if you don't leave, then you'll be arrested. But you won't be arrested for not wearing a mask. You'll be arrested for trespass, which is a class B misdemeanor. So what we really are asking people to do is to be respectful and kind to each other. If someone says, wear a mask in my business, wear a mask. If they don't care, then go without a mask. But be respectful of the fact that there are people that really don't need to be exposed and there will be times when you need to wear a mask out of respect for those folks. Are masks uncomfortable? Yes. Are they hot? Yes. I've known operating room nurses that get tossed afoul. I understand that. But it's not a violation of your rights. It is a simple, expedient trying to reduce the spread of this disease. And even if it only reduces it 50%, it better than not reducing it at all. And so that's the main thing. I mean, what I would hope y'all would take from this is we're really just asking the community to be thoughtful to each other. And we're going to work through this issue with the governor as far as, it would be helpful if his orders were a little more objective. This is so subjective as to be unenforceable. This is so subjective as to be unenforceable. And some of us think there are some reasons why, because he is a, actually, a very good lawyer. And as the attorney general of the state, I, I think he was top notch. There's a reason why he's written this order like this, I don't know what it is. But I have some ideas, but they're not fit for public consumption. So DD 14, I'm asking the court to authorize DD 14 an extension of our previous, with the ability for me to, if we lose our exemption, to put it up on the webpage, put it up on social media, put it in the, in the news media, make sure that everyone understands what the loss of the exemption means. It means that masks are required in public spaces if social distancing is not convenient. If you're in a room full, crowded, crowded room, at that point, everyone will have to have on a mask. If you're out by yourself, on the job, you know, on a tractor, uh, cutting grass in the roadway, no reason to wear a mask. But if you go in to Al's at lunchtime to get a burrito, then you might need to have a mask on to get back out in the car. And that is for you as much as for anyone else.
No, Judge, that's only if we lose the exemption. Right, right. So right now, we're, masks are optional until, if, and until we lose the exemption.
They're optional unless you're going in someplace that says that requires masks. I know some corporate entities are requiring their, uh, their franchisees to follow certain rules. And so, uh, the local businesses may not have a choice. I haven't checked all of them, but I know Subway's got a sign up that says masks required, and I can see that. Subway, the Subway corporate body is made up of a bunch of doctors, and I can understand them putting that requirement on their franchisees. So, you know, some of these local folks don't have any say in it either. Uh, they're not dealing this, just with the governor, they're doing it.
Some are saying regardless of the number of cases that, that's active, they're going to start requiring, whether it's five, whether it's 50, they're going to start requiring masks there. But that is their choice.
But that's, we have a motion by Commissioner Bell, authorizing the county judge to sign DD 14, and a second by Commissioner Rawson. And we'll get this, this also, this packet that you all got, or should have got if you didn't, there's your... Has DD 28, the proclamation and, I mean, DD, GA 28 and the proclamation that changed the meeting size from 100 to 10, and GA 29, which is the mask, all of that will be up on the, on the webpage, if you want to see that. When we've got a motion, a second, authorizing the county judge to sign, uh, DD 14. Do we need to change, have any further discussion? Be no further discussion, we'll vote in favor. I, Judge, I mean, Commissioner Rawson.
Commissioner Bell.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Houston, Judge Keith Lozai, and that motion carries unanimously. The question, we'll stay on six, is, do we need to change any of our, uh, action plan with GA 29? Or do we leave it to our department heads to decide what they need, if they want to require masks and things like that in their areas?
I had a question from the 4X about a shoot that they're going to have next weekend. And they were wondering if the county was going to allow the shoot. They're going to host on Friday, and then Saturday, they're going out here to have their shooting. I told them my father loved them, they can keep them all, they can order the...
And I believe there's some guidance on DSHS webpage for those kinds of outdoor events. And, but their big concern will be the proclamation that moves the meeting, or group size from 100 to 10, and the requirement that if it's out of county, that we have to approve it. And I would take the motion to approve, uh, those scheduled events as long as they are able to meet the social distancing and hygiene, hygiene and those kinds of things that are Have a motion by Commissioner Bell, a second by Commissioner Rawson, authorize, uh, the 4X to continue their activities as long as they can, social business and provide the anti... Discussion on that? There be no discussion in favor? We'll vote aye, Commissioner Rawson.
Commissioner Bell.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
And Commissioner Houston.
Aye.
Judge Keith Lozai, and that's unanimous. Any other changes on our action plan?
My comment, rodeo will be canceled. The voter knows, because they, Bush Williams president of the rodeo club, today they think they can go down to the governor's orders and have social distancing and hygiene for a rodeo.
The rodeo event would be nearly impossible. I agree with you.
And so, they took it on theirself, all means, and I very appreciate it so that, that they said that it was going to cancel it. And, well, I, they, they showed respect to the county and not to get a bunch of people together, even though it's a fun event and it's a, a good event for them to hold. And I appreciate their, their consideration to those people.
Well, they joined good companies. The state here of Texas is canceled. So...
I mean, my best off to them making that decision. I know it's hard, probably already planned it, they ordered buckle, but they've done bands, they've done stock contractors, and they've done a lot of things beforehand, I think they were going to put it on and...
I would pick that up, no?
So we have a motion for a vote of appreciation for the rodeo committee. We have a motion authorizing a vote of appreciation for the rodeo committee, second by Commissioner Bell. Discussion? Be no discussion in favor, Commissioner Rawson, Commissioner Bell, Commissioner Murphy, Commissioner Houston. It's got time to party, and Judge Keith Lozai. So I'll, I'll put together a lever of appreciation and set it up for all of our signatures. Again, back to action plan, do we want to leave it to elected officials and department heads to make the decisions in their spaces? And we'll get word out, if they need to make any changes, they'll get it to me and we'll get it up on the press report page. Anything else on six? Yet. Let me get it. The order number will be 200708-01. Judge? Judge, you have another topic before we're off to COVID?
No, we've got, we've still got orders to do.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, item seven, consider approving the jail inspection. The jail went through it just before all the, the surprise over there with those infected fellows. They went through an inspection with the jail standards, I sat in on the exit briefing. And, Dear Sheriff Pittman, most recent inspection of the jail, gang's got in jail on June 17th, 2020 by Texas Commissioner of Jail Standards, Inspector John Luna, has demonstrated to your fellow, your facility is in compliance with Texas minimum jail standards. You close, you'll find a significant bit of compliance for the jail...